It's seven o'clock, and I'd like to get the meeting of the Urbana City Council started.
I'm for saving the Bill's House, so what do I say? We're right in here. I'm for saving it.
Would the clerk please call the roll? Ms. Barnes?
Here.
Mr. Bowersox?
Here.
Mr. Garrick?
Here.
Mr. Lewis?
Here.
Mr. Roberts?
Here.
Mr. Smythe? Ms. Stevenson?
Present.
Mayor Pressing? Here. Next is the approval of the minutes of the previous meeting, which is September 2nd. Okay, motion by Smythe, seconded by Lewis. Any additions or corrections to the minutes? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries. Now we come to additions to the agenda.
I've got a suggestion. We have a planning case coming, well, actually, as a historic preservation case relating to the Bill's House, which is far down on our agenda, and since the petitioners and involved people are here tonight, and some of them have come from a distance, I suggest that we move item number 11 under New Business forward to item number 1 under New Business.
Okay, is there any objection to that? Okay, we'll do that. Is there anyone who would like to address the City Council at this point? I know some people who want to talk about the zoning issue want to wait until that item comes up. Is there anyone who wants to address the council now? All right, we'll move on. I don't believe there's any old business reports of standing committees, the committee of the whole. Heather Stevenson.
Orderance number 2008-09-106, an ordinance authorizing the lease of certain real estate. This is 911 North Lincoln Avenue for the committee. I so move.
Okay, motion by Stevenson, seconded by Lewis. Any discussion? If not, would the clerk please call the roll? Ms. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Bowersox?
Yes.
Mr. Garrick?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
That motion carries.
Mayor? I have a question. Can we take the traffic codes in omnibus fashion, or can we not do that in council? Okay, so B, C, D...
E?
E? Okay. I would like to take ordinance number 2008-08-084, 8586, and 87 in omnibus fashion for the committee. I so move.
Motion by Stevenson, seconded by Smythe. Any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll? Ms. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Bowersox?
Yes.
Mr. Garrick?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe? Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
That motion carries.
Ordinance number 2008-09-097, an ordinance prohibiting the use of groundwater as a portable water supply by the installation or use of portable water wells or by any other method. For the committee, I so move.
Second. Motion by Stevenson, seconded by Roberts. Is there any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll? Ms. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Bowersox?
Yes.
Mr. Garrick?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe? Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Ordinance number 2008-09-104, an ordinance approving two agreements with Drainage District Number 3 of the Town of St. Joseph regarding detachment of areas from the Drainage District. For the committee, I so move.
I second that.
Okay, motion by Stevenson, seconded by Roberts. Any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll? Ms. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Bowersox?
Yes.
Mr. Garrick?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
That motion carries.
Ordinance number 2008-09-105, an ordinance revising the annual budget ordinance regarding the St. Joe Drainage improvements. For the committee, I so move.
Second. Motion by Stevenson, seconded by Barnes. Any discussion? Would the clerk call the roll? Ms. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Bowersox?
Yes.
Mr. Garrick?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mayor Pressing? Yes. Ms. Stevenson?
Ordinance number 2008-09-098, an ordinance amending Sections 3-5 and 3-60 of the Urbana City Code concerning removal of partially consumed bottles of wine from restaurants. For the committee, I so move.
Second.
Motion by Stevenson, seconded by Barnes. Any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll? Ms. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Bowersox?
Yes.
Mr. Garrick?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe? Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
That motion carries.
Ordinance number 2008-09-099, an ordinance amending Section 15-31 of the Urbana City Code concerning breaking and entering. For the committee, I so move.
Second. Motion by Stevenson, seconded by Lewis. Any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll? Ms. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Bowersox?
Yes.
Mr. Garrick?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
That motion carries.
Ordinance number 2008-09-100, an ordinance amending Section 1533 of the Urbana City Code concerning damage to property. For the committee, I so move.
Motion by Stevenson, seconded by Smythe. Any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll? Ms. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Bowersox?
Yes.
Mr. Garrick? Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe? Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
That motion carries.
Ordinance number 2008-09-101, an ordinance amending Sections 1535 and 1536 of the Urbana City Code concerning criminal trespass to land. For the committee, I so move.
Second. Motion by Stevenson, seconded by Roberts. Any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll? Ms. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Bowersox?
Yes.
Mr. Garrick?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
That motion carries.
Ordinance number 2008-09-102, an ordinance amending Section 1560 of the Urbana City Code concerning disorderly conduct. For the committee, I so move.
Second.
Motion by Stevenson, seconded by Barnes. Any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll? Ms. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Bowersox?
Yes.
Mr. Garrick?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
That motion carries.
Ordinance number 2008-09-103, an ordinance amending Chapter 15 of the Urbana City Code to prohibit the unlawful possession of cannabis and drug paraphernalia for the committee. I so move.
Second.
Motion by Stevenson, seconded by Smythe. Mr. Bowersox?
Yeah, I wanted to make a motion to postpone consideration. I just wanted the opportunity to have a follow-up conversation with our chief or assistant chief in the next few weeks, so we could take a final vote in two weeks if it's okay with people. Yeah, to defer.
Okay, motion by Mr. Bowersox, seconded by Mr. Smythe to defer. That is non-debatable from this?
Oh, it's non-debatable?
I believe it is.
Okay.
Okay, so we will defer this and talk about it in two weeks. Reports of special committees, I don't believe there are any reports of officers. Just very briefly, we've been invited to compete with champagne in a tournament to benefit the Boys and Girls Clubs, and that would be on Friday, the 26th of September. So they now have three teams. Each team has two people, so if we could get some teams, we might be able to win. You never know. So let me know if you want to join in on that. Anyone else? Robert Myers?
Quickly, I have some good news to report. Results of our special census that the City of Urbana undertook in contract with the U.S. Census Bureau. The special census was conducted of an area identified by the city, which included our growth areas, and just within the results we've just gotten back, just within those areas that we've identified for the special census, we increased the population since 2000, since the year 2000, increased 3,046 residents. So that's good news because for several reasons, including the fact that revenues coming from the state are expected to increase about $122 per additional resident. So we should see between now and when the 2010 census population is released in early 2011, we should see additional revenues from the state, from state income, state use, motor fuel tax, library grant, again, about $122.25 per person annually. If you do the math, that could turn out somewhere between, well, roughly $700,000 or $800,000, roughly, depending on when the state turns those numbers around and starts sending money back to us. I just want to report the good news, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Charlie?
Yeah, Robert, thank you. It is good news. Does that make our official population 40,000-something?
It does not. Actually, the Census Bureau has said that they only recognize, for federal Census Bureau purposes, they only recognize if there's a special census for the entire city, but under the state rules, they do add that on top of what our 2,000 number was. So the state does recognize that that was a population increase citywide of little over 3,000 people. So for state apportionment purposes, for taxes and other payments, yes, but for federal Census Bureau purposes, no, if that makes sense.
Robert Lewis?
I have a report from the task force studying trails and open spaces. It's a community-wide effort, and we have a draft of what we have, what we should have learned up until now, so just FYI to council members. One's for Robert Myers. And Nidhi. You want to?
So, Robert, did you have the total, the new total? I don't think it's in the memo, or I didn't see it at least.
I can get that for you in just a few moments.
Okay, thank you. All right, we'll move on. Any other reports of officers? Okay, let's go on to New Business, and the first item will be ordinance number 2008-09-117, an ordinance designating a historic landmark at 508 West Elm Street, the Bill's House.
And Mayor, may I? I wish to recuse myself on this issue due to a possible seeming conflict of interest.
Okay. I have several people who would like to testify on this. I'm doing it approximately in the order that I received them. Carolyn Baxley? And you know the drill, but for everyone else, please state your name and address. Thank you, and keep your remarks to no longer than five minutes.
Carolyn Baxley, 510 West Main, Urbana. I'm here to speak in behalf of the landmarking. Although this house is not nearly as visibly a landmark as the ones that have already been designated on the street, I think it would be if it weren't wearing an overcoat. I hope that tonight, when you're thinking about this, you don't consider the aluminum siding as a detriment to landmarking this house. As I mentioned before, Historic Preservation Commission, there would be a lot of local landmarks that wouldn't already be designated if this were a hindrance. The Orpheum Theater was clad in aluminum when we took it over, and the Ricker House was clad in aluminum. Far from being a detriment, it often protects the clavate underneath, and, you know, hopefully underneath 508 West Elm is the jewel that we believe it to be. I've been inside the house. It retains a great deal of interior integrity. I know that's not at issue here because you're looking at landmarking for the exterior. But anyway, I just wanted to encourage you to uphold your Historic Preservation Commission's recommendation and to landmark the house. I think it will help to protect also the other properties that you've already landmarked on that street. It makes a lot of sense. Elm Street was one of the premier streets in early Urbana, and the Bills and others who lived in this house, you know, were very prominent citizens, and I feel that it certainly deserves your consideration. I will tell you that the Urbana Development Group has made an offer to Mr. Gorski to purchase the house, and hopefully, whether or not it's landmarked, we can work out something on that so that the house can be saved. But I do encourage you to strongly consider landmarking the house tonight.
Thank you. Next is Joan Zagorski.
I'm Joan Zagorski. I live at 1605 South Race. And I want to see the Bill's House saved. If we, the people in the City Council of Urbana, do not stop this destruction of one after another of our historic houses by allowing developers to tear them down to be replaced by cheap, ugly aluminum and plastic apartment buildings, our historic Urbana will disappear, and the reason people are drawn to and choose to live in Urbana will no longer exist. And last but not least, the houses adjacent to these apartment buildings lose their value. Some years ago, I wrote a letter to the Historic Charleston Foundation asking advice about preservation. I did receive a very helpful reply, listing the benefits of preservation and restoration such as rising property values, a vibrant downtown, plus a strong tourism economy, and good restaurants and art festivals. It also stated that it is critical to have the unswerving support of our politicians and leading citizens. Enforcement of existing ordinances is critical to success. And the last part of the letter said, "But first, you must have the support of your mayor and local leaders." Thank you.
Thank you. Julian Gorski.
Thank you. My name's Julian Gorski. I live at 28 Clinton Place, Normal, Illinois. I'm the property owner at 508 West Elm. In respect of the council's agenda and your time, I'll be concise and direct. The property at 508 West Elm does not meet the criteria of Section 12-5, C, 1, A, B, or C. To support that argument, I'll highlight some of the arguments that I have included in the packet that you've received prior to this evening. First of all, on Section A, I'm not going to read it because it would take too long to read it, but it deals with the property, and part of my supporting argument is that the preliminary determination by the Department of Community Development Services dated June 26 concluded that 508 West Elm does not qualify for designation as a local historic landmark based on the criteria set. The recommendation continues that although the building marginally meets one or two of the criteria for individual listing, it is not significant enough to designate it as a local landmark, particularly with its integrity compromised by the addition of aluminum siding. The department received 20 responses from a surveyed, certified local governments in Illinois, and all of those except for one said that nonoriginal siding, such as aluminum siding on 508 West Elm, would be problematic. I went and had an independent report done by John Garner, University of Illinois professor emeritus. He was contracted. He had no interest in the property. He's unknown to me. His report stated that a finding of a landmark status should be governed by the integrity of the property. In the 1970s, the Secretary of the Interior defined integrity for architectural purposes as those qualities that give a structure, meaning, and value. Professor Garner concludes his report by stating that the integrity of 508 West Elm can be brought into question by its present condition and its setting. The building has been subdivided into departments and its exterior recovered with nonoriginal material. He goes on to say, "To either side are more recent buildings of different style, material, and scale." This should raise the question of whether the property meets Section 21A of the city's zoning ordinance regarding significant value. Item C, Criteria C, also deals with the property representative of distinguishing characteristics. My arguments that say that it does not qualify there as well, again, the preliminary determination of Department of Community Development, June 26, states, "The original trim and details are no longer visible. It is unclear if they've simply been covered or if they were removed when the aluminum siding was installed. The addition of the aluminum siding has negatively affected the integrity of the house." The staff's conclusion states that the Bill's House is representative of a distinguishing characteristic of an architectural type inherently valuable for the study of a period, but does not retain sufficient integrity. The independent report by John Garner says there are other examples of the period and style in the neighborhood which exhibit better examples of both style and craftsmanship. He says 508 West Elm does not exhibit a high degree of integrity as called for in the criterion. Finally, Criteria B. The argument's preliminary determination by the Department of Community Development for historical landmark dated June 26, the city staff does not find a clear demonstration that the Bill's House is associated with an important person in local history. The application presumes media coverage connotes significance, but the information provided in the application does not support this. The information provided regarding the Bills does not demonstrate a specific contribution to Urbana history which would qualify the Bills as important in local history. Before I highlight some of the conclusions from my response presented to the commission September 3, I want to point out that all of my conclusions are based upon resources which have been cited and included in all of your documentation. On the other hand, most of the statements in the original application are not cited. Furthermore, many of them do not even relate to 508 West Elm or when the Bills were actually occupying the property. Commissioner Dorsett confirmed at the September meeting that the applicant's statements were not verified by staff or the commission, and this raises an issue since decisions are being made based on statements which have not been substantiated. Some of the conclusions that I'd like to highlight regarding Frank Bills in the city of Urbana is that Frank Bills lived in the property for only six years. The only business that I could find that he operated was a tobacco and cigar store, which was a small newsstand in the St. Nicholas Hotel, and it had only been open for maybe two years. Frank Bills was listed in city directories of the time as a traveling salesman, postman, telephone promoter, Chicago banker, and in addition, his obituary read that he was interested in the telephone business. Nowhere were all these other pioneers, activities, and et cetera. Frank Bills lived most of his adult life away from Urbana. Ms. Metlowfsky says in her application that the Bills lived on the road, or that Frank Bills lived on the road and was frequently gone from Urbana for weeks at a time. The Courier, in August 16, 1918, issues says, refers to Frank Bills as of Florida. Lastly, the contention that the position of postmaster was important in the late 19th century neglects such factors as the passage of the Pendleton Act in 1883. This act marked the inevitable demise of the political spoil system and an end to the association between the postmaster, appointments, and prominent and political connections. Indeed, before the start of the next century, the position of postmaster would be reduced to that of a civil servant. And one must be careful in declaring that a position is important. Criteria B actually says that the person is important. There seems to have been a shifter in the petition that wants to make the position important. Because if the position of postmaster is important, then the homeowner is living in homes that would also be vulnerable to an involuntary landmark designation since they were all occupied by an Urbana postmaster. I have a list of 12 homes of people who are, were living, let me say it another way. I have a list of 12 post, and you've got it in your records, 12 postmasters, from the record appointments of postmasters from 1832 to September 30, 1971, microfilm, reel 27, target 10. And then there is a list of the postmasters from Urbana, and then I looked and saw what homes they lived in at the time that they were postmasters. So if you make the postmaster position the criteria, then all of those would be. 503 West Green, 806 West Oregon, there's 14 of them on there, and you have copies of them. All that would be required is that someone not approve what the owner plans to legally do with the property, and then apply for the designation based upon the fact that a postmaster lived in the house. These are simply some of the highlights of those that support in the documents. And I know that you've already studied the complete documents. Tonight, I only presented a few of the high points. I think it's clear that based on the historical report of Professor John Garner, the determination of the Department of Community Development Services, and the documented research that I presented at 508 West Elm does not meet the criteria for historical landmark designation as described in the Historic Preservation Ordinance, and that your no vote will support that. Voting no is not a vote against historical preservation. It is a vote for the preservation of the intent of the ordinance to preserve truly significant properties. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Gorski? Okay, thank you. Chris Bertie?
Chris Bertie, 411 West Nevada Street. I'm here to support keeping 508 intact. My argument would be to keep the integrity of that part of the neighborhood. I think if you voted no, while it would not necessarily go against preserving historic properties, it would prevent preserving historic properties in that neighborhood, which is already has properties which are of landmark status. So I think there's a lot to be said for keeping more intact in the neighborhood as well as individual properties in that neighborhood. I also want to say that I lived in a 100-year-old arts and I also want to say that I lived in a 100-year-old arts and crafts bungalow on Washington Street for four years. And I put some work into the house, and I talked to an architect, somebody that was involved with preservation, and I said, "At some point, I'd like to take this aluminum siding off." And he says, "You know something? This is, that's a really good idea." But he said, "The best thing about aluminum siding, it's like a coat, and it preserves what's there. And you really don't know what's underneath there to take it off." But he said, "At the very least, that is probably going to look like very close to the day it was put on." So I think we have an opportunity here to preserve what's left of that neighborhood because two, three years ago, we didn't have this opportunity. Just think about all the houses that have come down again, and again, and again. We have an opportunity here for the first time. I mean, I've been involved coming here for over a year now, and we didn't have this, and we don't have much left. So I think you have a really good opportunity here to preserve more of that neighborhood, and I hope you do. Thank you.
Thank you. Ilona Matkowski.
Hi, I'm Ilona Matkowski. I live at 412 West Elm Street, one block from the building that I nominated for local historic landmark. I would just like very briefly to summarize my statements about the significance of the family that built the house and some of the families that lived in the building and some points about the exterior of the building. The house was built in 1889 by Frank Bills and his wife Grace Bills. They lived in this building only for six years. At the time when they built the house, Frank Bills was Urbana postmaster. He was postmaster for four years. The significance of this position historically is that it was the only federally nominated position in any city. Frank Bills was nominated, in other words, by the United States President to be postmaster of Urbana. The Chicago Daily Tribune of April 7, 1893, announced the various federal position nominations. It says, "The President sent the following nominations to the Senate today," and it lists the various people who were nominated for federal positions. One of the items deals with the postmasters, and under this, Frank L. Bills, Urbana, Illinois, is listed. The nomination had to be approved by the Senate, and the Chicago Daily Tribune of April 13, 1893, announced that the nominations by the President for various federal posts were confirmed by the Senate. And it says, "The Senate confirmed the following nominations," and among the postmasters, again, Frank L. Bills is listed. Given this, I would suggest that not just anybody could become postmaster, but somebody had to have some significance, business or political significance in the town to become Frank Bills, so basically, when he built the house, he was a postmaster, which was the only federal position in the town and nominated by the President of the United States. He was a traveling telephone exchange businessman, which was a new technology at the time. Telephones were part of the new technology, and he basically spread this new technology in various Midwestern states. His importance is underlined by the fact that his life and his wife's life was very closely followed by the local newspapers, and that is definitely an indication of importance in any city. Nonimportant people are not followed by the newspapers. So as an indirect indication, newspaper articles about people indicate significance. Another point about his importance that should be made is that in his obituary, it was announced that his pallbearers were several important people in Urbana, and I would just like to list three of these whose names are well-known or should be well-known in Urbana history. One of his pallbearers was Joseph W. Royer, famous Urbana architect. Another one was Garrett Baker, who was a bank director, Busey-in-law, and he also was the builder of Buena Vista Court, which is directly west of the Bill's House at 508 West Urbana. A third pallbearer was Charles Kyler, who was a University of Illinois graduate, and he was an advocate of paved roads in Champaign County when the majority of the politicians were against this. And he also is a writer of a book on the banks of the Boneyard, which deals with the early life of, well, early student life at the University of Illinois. Frank Bills' wife, Grace Bills, was also a significant person. She was a member of the Illinois Federation of Women's Clubs. She had significant positions in this club. In 1903, she was a corresponding secretary. In 1906, she was elected state secretary. In 1908, she was nominated for vice president. In 1910, she was supported for the presidency of the Federation. I would like to add that the Federation of Women's Club was not a tea club for women. It had very important social role, most important being the organizing and supporting of libraries when, at a time when there were no or very few public libraries across the state and across the country. As an important person within this club, she would have been a significant person in spreading knowledge, basically, through the organization of libraries. After the Bills sold the house, Thomas Colvin bought it, who was an Urbana meat market owner on Main Street for 39 years with his two sons. His importance, again, can be measured, he was a longstanding, important businessman, and his importance can also be measured by the fact that for the last about six or eight years of his life, he lived a long life into his 80s, every year there was an announcement on his birthday and an appraisal of his importance in this city, in the local newspapers. Again, I would suggest that only significant people would get that kind of treatment on their birthdays. After the Colvin family, the building was owned from 1946 by Ernest Matthews. For over 25 years and his wife, Ginny, Mr. Matthews was assistant professor at the University of Illinois for 21 years. He worked in the English department. He published a book, American College English, A Handbook of Usage and Composition. He died at a relatively young age of 53 in this home, 508 West Elm Street. His wife, Ginny, was an Urbana older woman and a librarian for the Courier newspaper. I believe that all these people can be and should be considered important in Urbana. He serves as a small town. There are only so many Griggs, Buses, and Sutons in a small town, so we cannot expect that every building will be associated with one of those people. These people were important in business, in education, in politics. So we have to look at these people as locally important people as we are talking about the nomination of this building as a local historic landmark and not set national standards of importance. About the integrity of the building, several points should be made. This building is unique in that it actually preserves a lot of its old features on the outside, and I would like to list some of these. It has the original windows, the original doors. It has the original porch with the original columns, balustrade. Its ground plan is origin, hasn't been added or subtracted from, added or subtracted from. It has its original brick foundation. Although the interior is not part of the evaluation, but the interior preserves the grand and truly grand staircase in the front hallway. It preserves the original doors and pocket doors, unpainted. Interestingly, it has tin ceilings in several rooms, which is very unusual in private homes. It's usually found in businesses. It also has a very large setback following the setback of 502 and 504 West Elm Street, which are just to the east of the building. It was clearly part of that elegant corner when it was built and was built by the, where the buildings were built by the Sutton family and Gos Freeman and, of course, Griggs House to here, which it has been replaced by the apartment building that's sticking on as a sore thumb in between the already landmark buildings and 508 West Elm. So the fact that it has aluminum siding, I believe, should not be taken as a distraction for the nomination. We can clearly see underneath that the old clapboard is preserved in several places, and very often, these clapboards are preserved or most often in pristine condition. It would have been very expensive to remove these at the time when aluminum siding was put on buildings in general, and this siding is probably 30 or more years old. They did not bother ripping off the original siding because of the expense, and at the time, they were not putting up insulation either, so they did not need to remove the siding. So we can expect to find probably much of the original decorative woodwork under it. I would suggest that it is an important building, both architecturally and historically, and to preserve the integrity of this very important block, the 500 block of West Elm Street, it should be preserved. We should not allow another apartment building to go up there and further chew away at this important location and beautiful location. There are historic landmarks to the east of the building, and to the west, Buena Vista Court is a historic district. To increase the historic integrity or maintain the historic integrity, whatever we still have of this location, we should preserve this building and not allow another apartment building to be built there. There is a possibility of preserving it as the Urbana Development Corporation offered to buy the building, restore it, and preserve it. It would be very nice if it would be landmarked and saved. I ask the council to landmark this building.
Thank you very much. I have two more people. Any questions for Ilona? I have two more people. I would ask you, since we've had so many people speak, that you limit your remarks to something that is new and different from what other people have said.
My name's Bryan Adams. I live at 412 West Elm Street, just three or four houses east of the Bill's House. A lot of what I wanted to say has been said already, so I won't repeat it in detail, but I would just like to emphasize some of the things that have been made because I think these are really the critical issues that should be discussed regarding this house. The Preservation Commission recently decided that this house did meet the criteria for a local landmark, and attempts been made to show that, no, in fact, it doesn't have any historic or architectural value. But I just want to repeat, again, I'm sorry to repeat, but I'll be brief, that we're talking about the local level, about the history of our city, and a lot of the people that were important 150, 75 years ago are invisible because we don't have a complete history of everybody in this city. The city wasn't completely populated by Buses or Webbers. These people were important, but they didn't exist in a cultural, a social, and an economic vacuum. What they did was built on the work and interaction with many other important people. The Bills were too such people. Frank Bills traveled a lot. It was his business to travel a lot. He was installing telephone exchanges throughout the Midwest, but he always came back to Urbana. He always saw Urbana as his home. The fact that he never lived in his house 24 hours a day, seven a week, I don't think that should detract from its historic value. Grace Bills, as has been said, was involved in the Women's Club's organization, was very influential in bringing libraries to communities. So again, for these reasons, I think that we have to recognize that this house is very important to the city, to the history of our community. Architecturally, it's intact. The whole argument about the effect of aluminum siding has been discussed already. Just to emphasize, the Ricker House, just a couple blocks away, was also covered in aluminum siding. And if you go by and look at that house, you'll see that beneath that aluminum siding, there was intact, beautiful woodwork. So I think that the whole idea that the aluminum siding has somehow compromised the integrity is just not true. Going back to the whole issue of who's important in our community, my house was built in 1899 by a railroad engineer named Zachariah Sharp. We've tracked his life and recreated his life by intensive research, but probably nobody here has ever heard of Zachariah Sharp. But if you read the newspapers between the 1870s and the 1890s, almost every day, there was a little article on Zachariah Sharp. He was the equivalent of Casey Jones to this community. He was noted for his safe record as a railroad engineer. He was an engineer for the IB&amp;W. He had the passenger run between here and Indianapolis. He was a well-respected and an upstanding citizen. He was a member of the Methodist Church. He was an important part of this community. And again, we don't know who he is, we don't, because we don't appreciate, or we have to bring these people back alive. So just an example again of how many important people there are and significant people there are in this town, and any remnant of their presence here in terms of their structures, I think, is worth saving. Karen Coomer of PACA expressed an opinion that the house is architecturally significant. She's a well-respected architectural historian, so I think her opinion has a lot of weight. The house is in the Moore District, Mixed Office Residential District, and one of the purposes of the Mixed Office Residential District is the adaptive reuse of older buildings. And here we have a structure that's in relatively good condition, has incredibly beautiful oak woodwork inside, and it's, again, we're risking losing it again. And I think that there have to be some things that we value in our community, and I think some of these old structures are what make our neighborhood and our community unique. And I just hope that you would support. And I just hope that you would support the landmark nomination and save another one of our quickly vanishing cultural resources in Urbana.
Thank you very much. Linda Lawrence.
I'd also like to see the house landmarked, and it's unfortunate that we didn't have some of us who are willing to put in so much volunteer time to protect these houses in our neighborhood, because what we have on the street now is three or four parking lots, several buildings which don't fit, and the few people who live and own property there are losing their sense of neighborhood and property, the value of their own properties to see these things go down and down and down. Somebody buys it, doesn't live in the neighborhood, doesn't care about the neighborhood, lets the thing goes down, then wants to demolish it and put up another, and we don't need another one of these things that's sitting on the sidewalk. This is our way of trying to keep our neighborhood intact, our property values intact, and to protect something that may have been, may have looked once upon a time not unlike Main Street, and now we've lost all those things. So, I hope that we can keep this one, and especially when we have a group that wants to buy the house and protect it and renovate it. Thank you.
Thank you. I also have Lois Steinberg. She doesn't want to speak, but she is in favor of landmark status. Is there any discussion on the council? Or someone want to make a motion? Oh, okay, you want a presentation from Rebecca?
Sure, I'll be very brief.
Okay.
As you know, this case is an application to designate the house at 508 West Elm Street, a local historic landmark. You've already heard from the applicant, Alona Makovsky, and the property owner, Julian Gorski. I won't talk about the house, as Alona did a very good job of describing the architectural style and the Bills, who it was built for. I'll just give you a quick chronology of the case. On April 14th, JSM Development applied for a demolition permit for this address. The property is subject to the forty-five day demolition delay, during which time the petitioner submitted the landmark designation application. Then on July 2nd, the Historic Preservation Commission made a preliminary determination that the property qualifies for designation as a local landmark under criteria A, B, and C of the zoning ordinance. Then on August 25th, the property owner filed a registered preference against the designation. A copy of that is in your packet, and Mr. Gorski did describe some of what it contains. According to the ordinance, if the owner has submitted a registered preference against the nomination, the city council shall approve or deny the application by enacting an ordinance with a two-thirds majority vote of all alderpersons then holding office. The registered preference included documentation addressing the criteria in the zoning ordinance A, B, and C, a report on the architectural significance of the house by a professional preservation consultant, and biographical research on the Bills. On September 3rd, the Historic Preservation Commission held a public hearing on the application. Five people, including the applicant, spoke in favor of designation. Two people, including the property owner, spoke in opposition. Following the public hearing, the commission voted four ayes and two nays to recommend that the Bills House be designated as a local historic landmark. Since then, actually today, I received thirteen emails in support of designation, and those should have been in front of you, along with some photos, three photos of the house. So, your options this evening are to approve or deny the application, and, as I just mentioned, a two-thirds majority is necessary to approve. The recommendation from the Historic Preservation Commission is to approve the application based on the summary of findings provided in your memo. The staff recommendation is to deny the application, mainly due to a concern that the aluminum siding has inhibited the building's ability to communicate its historic character.
Thank you. Heather.
Can you tell me again the date in which it was applied for a demolition permit?
April 14th.
So, at the eleventh hour is what I'm reading here, is that on the forty-fourth day that this was applied for the historic.
It's actually the forty-fifth day.
Thanks.
Lynn Barnes.
I'll be voting against this, because I don't feel that it, that it's been proven, or there's not enough evidence that really shows that it meets our own standards, and enough to that extent that it takes away the rights of an owner. So, you know, I think, it seems like this is kind of the mechanism to avoid putting an apartment building there, and while I'm not fond of necessarily another apartment building being there, I don't think this is the way to address that problem. So, I will be voting against this designation.
Is there a motion? Charlie.
I have a couple of questions. The staff, yeah. There are two questions here, and it's bottom, or it's in the middle of page six of the memo dated August 28th, from you, actually, to the Urbana Historic Preservation Commission. And in the middle of page six, second paragraph, the second sentence here is what concerns me. Although the Bills House is located in a significant neighborhood, one that is most likely worthy of historic designation, that alone does not establish the house as an Urbana landmark. My question for you would be, you know, if a neighborhood is worthy of historic designation, and you've got Buena Vista on one side and two houses on the other side, then, and this house clearly contributes to the, and this idea rears its ugly head again, this clearly contributes to the sense of the neighborhood as historic, why would we not consider it a landmark?
The criteria for individually designating a landmark, the criteria have a higher bar than for a district, and so it's looking at, if you looked at that district, it, we already have, as you just mentioned, three landmarks in it, one of which is Buena Vista, which is actually a district, but, so that alone would meet the criteria, but to designate something individually, it in and of itself has to meet those criteria.
And then, you know, I guess the other issue is the whole issue of the aluminum siding, which, and I have, the second story of my house is aluminum siding. I've looked underneath it, and it was put there simply for the convenience of the previous owners, so they didn't have to paint the second floor. It's still all intact. Aluminum siding was, you know, sold as a mechanism for minimizing the need for painting, and does, you know, in my experience, you know, that some of the people who've spoken today, clearly preserve what's underneath, so I find it hard to believe that, that given the experiences that people have had with aluminum siding, that the fact that aluminum siding is there is a detriment to determining that a house is landmarkable. Is there something I'm missing here?
Of the communities that we surveyed in trying to learn more about how communities in Illinois treat houses with aluminum siding, one person did respond that they thought, they individually thought of aluminum siding as a protective measure, and it didn't affect how he felt about whether or not a property still looked, still had its integrity, basically, but of the other nineteen communities, all of them that replied, said that you have to look at the building as it looks now. The property owner doesn't support it. It would, it might be different if the property owner supported it and was going to, maybe made an agreement with the city to take off the siding as soon as they could afford it and restore the exterior, but right now, it has the aluminum siding on it, and so that's what you're judging, that's what you're making a landmark. There's no assurance that the siding will ever come off.
If it were designated a landmark, can you remove the siding, or do you have to jump through a bunch of hoops to remove the siding?
You would need a certificate of appropriateness to do that, but I'm sure our commission would be more than happy to grant a certificate of appropriateness to remove artificial siding.
Okay, thank you.
Brandon.
Yeah, I'll move approval of ordinance 2008-09-117.
Second.
Okay, motion by Bowers Socks, seconded by Smythe. Mr. Bowers Socks.
Yeah, if I could briefly speak to it. Just, first off, for people who are counting, I think this takes five votes, because it's two-thirds of everyone holding office, so it would take five out of six of us, so I'm not sure whether this might pass tonight or be defeated, but very briefly, to me, the, you know, the three criteria are, does this property have significant value in the social heritage of the community? Were these people important people in local history? And is it representative of the architectural type? And to me, looking at all the evidence, and I appreciate hearing the details from both sides, it meets all three criteria. I just have a couple points about that. I won't elaborate on all of them. The question of, well, is it important that this person was the postmaster, Frank Bills? I think, obviously, that's not the single criterion, that if you're a postmaster, it's automatically a historic house that you lived in, or that all the houses you ever lived in must be historic. But to me, it's one of the things, in the totality of the whole picture, if, you know, if this person was postmaster of this town less than twenty years after the railroad came here, that's a prominent position. I think, to me, that qualifies as important person. And in the totality of what Frank and Grace Bills did, his job as postmaster here is part of that, and to me, that speaks a lot to criteria B. The second question about the high degree of integrity and the aluminum siding. To me, for a house built in 1889, this house has a high degree of integrity, and the fact that the towers are there, the windows and doors are there, the wraparound porch is there, the gable that's kind of snubbed off at the top, I forget the technical terminology, I'm not an architect, but to me, this house has integrity despite that siding that's there, and still has, still clearly shows its, you know, its architectural character. And so, to me, criteria C is met, judging by the evidence. Now, lastly, I would say, I do appreciate the report from John Gardner, the other expert in historic preservation. It makes some points that do carry a lot of weight with me. One of them was the point that Frank Bills is probably not fairly considered a pioneer in telecommunications history. That was one of the words that was in the application. I think I definitely agree with John Gardner on that point. He wasn't really a pioneer in telecommunications history. Now, the word pioneer, I checked, it's not in the ordinance itself. It is in the documentation from, in the application for historic nomination, but it's not in the ordinance. If it were, I'd move to strike it, because I don't think this guy was a pioneer. I'd say maybe he's a key figure in regional telecommunications, if he installed major telephone exchanges in three or four states around here, but, so I appreciate that, I appreciate all the evidence, and to me, on balance, the house meets A, B, and C, and so I encourage people to vote yes.
Charlie Smythe.
Now, there's a motion on the floor. I'd like to be able to give this some thought, so I move to defer.
Okay, there's a motion to defer. Mr. O'Neil.
I think you have to pick for a date certain.
Move defer is automatic to the next council.
Is it automatic?
Yep.
Okay, all right.
Okay, so there's, that was moved by Mr. Smythe and seconded by Mr. Garrick, so...
Council rules.
That's it. Okay, it's deferred until two weeks from today. All right, getting back to the new business. We have ordinance number 2008-09-107, an ordinance vacating Lakeside Terrace, Division Avenue, and part of Broadway Avenue. Gail Jamison is here.
The vacations you have for you this evening are necessary to allow the Crystal View Town Home Project to proceed at this point in time. The street orientations will change with the proposed development, so we're wanting to vacate Lakeside Terrace and Division Avenue as they exist now, and then they will be rededicated as part of the plating of the Crystal View Project. And then also, we're proposing to vacate eleven and a quarter feet of Broadway Avenue to allow the proper setbacks for the community building as part of the project. That will still leave sixty feet of right-of-way for Broadway Avenue, which is adequate and matches the right-of-way to the north for that type of street. So, we are recommending the ordinance be approved, the vacation be approved. As far as fiscal impact, we're requesting a payment from the Housing Authority for $500 for the vacations.
Charlie.
Move approval.
Second. Moved by Smythe, seconded by Barnes. Would the clerk, oh, is there any other discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll? Ms. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Bowers Socks?
Yes.
Mr. Garrick?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson? That motion carries. Next, ordinance number 2008-09-108, an ordinance approving combined preliminary and final subdivision plats, lots two and three on Lincoln Avenue and I-74 re-subdivision. Robert Myers.
Hi, this is a preliminary and final subdivision plat for a three-acre subdivision wrapping around Speedway Gas Station on Lincoln Avenue and Kalani, and essentially, they're moving a lot line about two-hundred feet, and the site, which is just south of Speedway Gas Station, is expected to be developed, we understand, with a hotel. And in order to effect that, this subdivision plat needs to take place in order to create that larger lot, and if the Plan Commission recommended for approval. If you have any questions, let me know, please.
Charlie Smythe.
Move approval.
I second.
Okay. Charlie Smythe made the motion. It was seconded, I think, by Dennis Roberts. Is that correct?
I'm totally in agreement with whatever Lynn says.
Any other discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll? Ms. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Bowers Socks?
Yes.
Mr. Garrick?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
That motion carries. Next is ordinance number 2008-09-109, an ordinance approving a preliminary and final subdivision plat, the second replat of lots one and two of the Myers-Urbana subdivision.
Hi, hi. Lisa? It's me. This is pretty quick also. It's a preliminary-final combination plat for the Meyer, replat of Meyer lots one and two. It's 30.95 acres to be divided into nine lots. You see out there already that there's Meyer Store as well as a Meyer Gas Station. Essentially, they want to sell some outlots, so this would provide additional outlots. Just wanted to address access per the annexation agreement in 1995, they will not have any additional accesses than what you see out there. They're not asking for any waivers or deferrals. The Plan Commission voted on September 4th to unanimously recommend approval by city council. Couple questions.
Charlie Smythe.
I was just going to move approval.
Second. Okay. Motion by Smythe, seconded by Barnes.
And I do want to add something.
Yes.
Yeah, I did, I know that there've been some concerns raised by the neighborhood in terms of noise and some of the berms that didn't quite get done the way they were expected, and it's my understanding that things have been worked out.
Dennis Roberts.
Go ahead.
Heather, did you want to?
I just wanted to make note that they had a meeting with the neighborhood on Friday, and some questions that the neighbors had were answered, and Libby, me memo today, I don't know if everyone, who else got the memo, but you can go ahead.
Okay, Libby Tyler, Community Development Director.
We did have a meeting with about thirteen or fourteen neighbors who live on Lydia Court, and their concerns relate to that buffer or lack of buffer between kind of the northeast end of the Myers Store and their neighborhood because of the grade change and the fact that not all the trees have grown up. It's... It's really created quite an impact on the neighborhood. Per the zoning ordinance, we're requiring a screen for the loading dock. That's in the ordinance, it wasn't in the annexation agreement, wasn't anticipated to be needed because of the burms, but the burms are not effective enough to screen the loading dock. That's one issue. So we're asking for fence or wall treatment for Myers, and waiting to hear back on the specifics of that. Second is to add the landscaping, there's a gap in the trees, and we're working with, not just Myers, but the Atkins Development Group as well, since they had installed the original landscaping for the Vista's. The third item, we talked about, were some nuisance lights that are affecting the neighbors as well. And again, without the screen or the landscaping, that exacerbates that. So we'll be shielding some of those lights. And, uh, in addition, the operations will reduce dramatically. They've been stocking up. There's soft opens October 1, and the hard opens October 5. So they've been stocking up this entire store. The loading will reduce down to three trips a day, and only one in the evening, late evening. So that will really reduce, but it's, it's just one of those issues that wasn't anticipated at the time of the site plan approval, but it definitely is a big land use impact, and we're working with the neighbors and with Myers to resolve those. Thank you.
I just wanted to say thanks to the city for working with the neighborhood. It takes a lot of emails and phone calls away from me, so thank you. Not that I wouldn't take them, but thank you for working with them, and I, I think that Meyer is, um, you know, they've been, so far, pretty friendly, and so hopefully we can continue that relationship.
Okay, Dennis, you had a question? A comment?
Yeah. I just wanted to confirm, and maybe Libby, you can help me with this, that as the development of the other outlots are prepared, will we see not only the building plans, but the sidewalk construction plans for pedestrian accessibility into the Myers subdivision itself? Are we going to require sidewalks along some of these access avenues, or how will the public enter by foot from the neighborhood to use the Myers Store?
There is, um, in the overall site plan, there are provisions for connections. There's a major pedestrian connection north-south in front of the Myers Store. So from Amber all the way down to Windsor, that's been set aside. We did, early on, the site plan review request east-west as well. It's not, um, provided fully. So we don't have protected pedestrian accessway across the parking lot. That's something that Myers considered but did not provide. However, within each outlot, you would have pedestrian connections. So we would require that and look for that in the site plans and in the plaques.
Okay. My concern is, I think, just how safely to enter into the, the major Myers shopping area when you have access routes for cars marked. We don't see any pedestrian pathways along those access streets between the outlots themselves.
There should be pathways along, along those outlots.
We're expecting that to be installed.
Any drive should have those, and maybe, Lisa, if you have any specifics.
Oh, I was just gonna let you know that if you go out there now on the major accesses where the streetlights are, one on each, I guess, on, it fronts three roads, that there is actually a sidewalk that goes from the existing sidewalks that are there into the Meyer development. And as Libby said, they will then stripe from those sidewalks to Meyer. You can see, it's kind of hard to see, but on the site plan that's included in your packet, they show that, those stripings. So they have provided for a way to get, as Libby said, from the existing sidewalks to inside the development. There's just not a provision for once you get to, if you're out on Philo, there's not a provision outside of walking through the parking lot.
I have one other question to ask about, and I probably should've gone out and driven out there, you know, this afternoon to try to look at this. If you look at Exhibit A, which is the location aerial map, at the corner of Amber Lane and Philo, there had been a, a kind of a pond that always formed due to rainwater. And I remember that the drainage plan has been approved for the entire subdivision, as we're calling this development. And I think that the, um, the flow pattern was set up so that it drained outside to a detention pond. And I guess I, I just want to be assured that the outlot number three, which borders, it's Amber Lane, that does show that there had been a depression there and a pond forming during inclement weather, has been leveled or filled, or in some way become a wet water feature, or some, I mean, I'm not sure how the city's expecting that to be not a, a problem during the construction of that and any outlot on that building.
Okay, Gail Jamison's here to answer your question.
That, that lot has been regraded to eliminate the, the pond that used to be created there, which was actually created when they built Amber Lane and tied it into Philo Road. It just kind of cut away a little, a outlet point for that water. It has been regraded and expected, as that lot develops, it'll be regraded some more. That drainage was all to go due to the detention pond, which is east of the Carl Facility and East Gate, so.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
Okay, any other discussion on this ordinance? Would the clerk please call the roll? Ms. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Bowers Socks?
Yes.
Mr. Garrick?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
That motion carries. Ordinance number 2008-09-110, an ordinance amending the zoning map of the City of Urbana, rezoning of 139 properties in the historic East Urbana neighborhood from R4 medium-density multiple-family residential to R3 single and two-family residential.
Hello. I'm going to just give you a quick overview here. If you have any questions, anytime, please feel free to stop me if you'd like. Essentially, you have before you, as the mayor said, a petition to rezone. Ends up being 162 properties in East Urbana. Just to point out to you, the comprehensive plan map that you have in front of you, we kind of took out the text because there was some current concern about the area that we used as the study area. But if you can see on the comprehensive map that is up on the screen as well as in your packet as Exhibit B, there are four areas in Historic East Urbana that have dashed lines outlined around them. And part of the comprehensive plan said that one of the goals or one of the policies was to look at these areas and determine where there are inconsistencies between zoning and land use. So essentially, staff last year completed a zoning and land use study that's Exhibit C in your packet. You can see the different colors that appear. And based on the comprehensive plan map, we kind of added one block to the west that added some confusion. When we did this, it was an error when we did the original land use map. So essentially, you can see by looking at this existing land use that the majority of the properties are yellow, which stand for single-family. And then if we go to the next slide, which deals with zoning, you can see that the majority of these properties show up as a green, or what we call R4 medium-density residential. So essentially, if you look at most of the properties, based on our survey, 78% being single-family, whereas when you look at the zoning map, the majority of them are essentially multifamily, that we have a large inconsistency in zoning. So once we gathered this data, we looked at the zoning, we made a preliminary proposal for rezoning. We presented it to the Historic East Urbana Neighborhood Association. We had an open house, and then we sent out a preference survey. The preference survey showed 74% of the property owners who were surveyed proposed to be rezoned in support, 26 in opposition. Once we took all that information, looked at it and assessed it, we then reassessed and confirmed what we were proposing and based those proposals on four things. Eliminate zoning and land use inconsistencies, eliminate non-conformities, minimize creation of new non-conformities, and essentially preserve the residential character of the neighborhood. So to help out and to explain the way that you have your ordinances before you, we have essentially five categories of rezoning that you can see. Based on talking with the legal department, they said that as a Plan Commission, as a council, you can look at them individually, approve or deny properties individually, in part or in whole. And what we did, because we look at the LaSalle criteria when we rezone, we looked at them based on the difference in the zoning category. So you have five ordinances based on these changes in zoning, if that made sense to you. So essentially, the largest majority are what you see in orange, R4 to R3. There are 139 properties that are presently single-family structures. The next one is R5 to R3. If you look at southeast of Grove Street and East Main Street, there's three properties. Two of those properties are single-family. The, the third one is a two-family. Next, we have properties that are green that show up around Victory Park, south of East Main Street. Those are presently R4, and we're proposing them to go to CRE, which would be Conservation, Recreation, Education, which would be consistent with use as the Park District. They are owned, thanks, they are owned by the Park District, and they are in support of rezoning those properties. Then once that handles all the properties south of East Main Street, then we look at north of East Main Street. We have kind of a mixture of residential and commercial uses. We've proposed to rezone seven of those properties from what's currently B3 to an R3, and those are properties that are single-family residential units. There is one that is a two-family residential unit, and that is allowed in R3, so that would still be consistent with that proposed zoning. Because there's a significant change from a commercial zoning to residential, we did not propose to rezone any property where we had a property owner come back and say, "I'm not in support of this. We want to put a business at this specific location." And then finally, we have a change from B3 to B2. Essentially, we felt that B3 is a higher commercial zoning district, if you think of Philo Road or, um, North Cunningham, that you have higher intensity-type uses, and that a B2 neighborhood business would be more suitable for this area, since it is more residential, or it is residential in nature. A B2 allows you to have a mix of both residential and commercial, and it would be, for that reason, more suitable. It would eliminate the non-conformities that are out there, the existing residential. So I'm more than welcome to go through each, what the essential changes are, if you wanted more information. But I think in our staff report, it did kind of spell out what changes, what it means to have it rezoned, and what the different categories are. So I didn't go through that, but if you'd like me to, I'd be more than happy to do that. So the Plan Commission, essentially, in their vote, they voted to forward the entire rezoning, all 162 properties, to City Council for recommendation for approval.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Roberts?
Basically, I'd like to, just to begin by motion, making a motion that the City Council adopt this rezoning and approve ordinance number 2008-09-1110.
And the next one? All of them in omnibus?
Shall we do them all in omnibus?
All in omnibus.
Is that a problem, to do them all together?
My understanding is that you can do all of them together in omnibus fashion. If anyone wants to pull out a specific ordinance to talk about individual properties within a smaller area, you can.
Okay.
And the other thing I wanted to note is the staff report that was done would include all items four through eight.
Right. Okay. We do have some people that want to talk about this. So you made a motion, is there a second to the motion?
And that would be for an omnibus, for all of the rezoning.
By Roberts and seconded by Lewis. And Chris Stor, did you wish to speak?
Thank you. I'm Chris Stor. I'm the chairman of the Historic East Urbana Neighborhood Association, which lies directly to the east of the city building. This particular measure, as very well described by Lisa Carter, is one of the particular reasons that our neighborhood association came into existence. We were very concerned about the conversion of single-family residences. Basically, some not very responsible landlords would allow their properties to wear down through lack of maintenance, and then replace the, uh, the units with, uh, with apartment houses, which would have parking lots in the front yard, no windows or doors towards the street, and for a lawn ornament at the very front of the house, a dumpster. Certainly not something that adds to the value of a neighborhood, and is very discouraging for homeowners who invest in their homes through remodeling, repairing, and maintenance, which I have to, which I'm pleased to report occurs with, you know, with great frequency and vigor in our neighborhood. The, I'd also call to your attention the, as my fellow neighbors have pointed out, that, that some of these conversions would apply for variances, for setbacks, and then proceed to put a sign in that setback. Again, not, not anything that, that adds value to the neighborhood. And I would, as an example of some of the expense that the neighbors are going to, one of the neighbors of a property adjacent to the area in question has gone to, to the considerable expense of moving their house, moving the, the entire house to a portion of the yard so that a new foundation could be constructed. And then will later this fall, put that house back on this new foundation. And I hope that the council will reaffirm the, the investment of the neighbors in their, in their neighborhood, in their houses, and, and the pride that they have therein. And I certainly ask you to support this rezoning.
Thank you very much. We did get a, a memo. There's one person that wrote to oppose this, and that was just, I think it would be item number eight. We got a email from Joy Reedy, I believe it is, Lisa Carter, sent that.
Yeah, I forgot to note that.
Okay. So is there any other discussion? Mr. Roberts?
No, do you want to, Brandon? All right. I just want to really express a lot of appreciation for the time and, and the planning that went into the evolution of the rezoning of this eastern district of the, of the City of Urbana. The other, other major older neighborhoods have already experienced the benefits of rezoning to make the properties fit the actual structures, and the actual structure on the properties fit the zoning types. And of course, West Urbana has had that experience. And the residents of East Urbana had often, had a great concern about high-density zoning in the northern end of their neighborhood association area. We do realize in East Urbana that we are abutting Main Street, which is a major artery into the city, and that Race Street and Vine Street, well, Vine Street is one of our neighbor, neighboring boundaries, has the city building and has, uh, has businesses along it. And being near the city center, we can expect some higher-density homes and construction there. But there needs to be a way of assuring that there is a good transition between those areas of the city and the immediate secondary streets that are along those routes, which have many, many single-family homes on them. Some of these homes have been divided into apartments, and, and yet the single-family residence, residential look exists and is maintained, especially along Elm Street on the north side. And all of these residences that, and properties that are up for consideration at this point are being stepped down one level to ensure that the, there still is... are being stepped down one level to ensure that the, there still is a multiple residency rental opportunity of owning a duplex in this area. But it also allows us to have the assurance that many of these residential districts in our northern area will not be removed, and a larger five and ten-plex apartments created there. We, I totally support the downzoning that's resulting from any of these changes in our zoning ordinance. The residents, you've already noticed, have been noted, 70% of the people responding were in favor of it. For adding proper zoning to the Park District, Victory Park, and in every instance, along the business route, we feel that B2 zoning is appropriate for neighborhood businesses to thrive, and we're allowing the businesses who did not wish to be downzoned to continue their zoning. There are fewer inconsistencies in the land use from this plan, and in general, I totally support the process and the results of this zoning effort, rezoning effort. I will say that the Neighborhood Association was indeed formed by the removal of a certain single-family home and its replacement by a five-plex on a corner. That was totally unexpected, and also, the building was erected with an improper setback, which then had to be made as a retrofitted exception. And we, so we were very much concerned about the future of our buildings and our homes in this area. Originally, there was, the study plan did include that section of Elm Street, the 500 block, which is just west of the current boundary that we're talking about tonight. And that street in particular was probably the, we considered in the East Urbana neighborhood to be the most sensitive and essential street to try to preserve. And unfortunately, because of a very strict interpretation of our comprehensive plan map, which was devised by people who maybe didn't have enough foresight to include that block, it's been pruned from our rezoning effort. And the results of it will be perhaps discussed in the next plan case that's coming after this one. So I'm just saying that we could have asked for more, but we're so pleased to get what is being offered tonight.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I would just add a few things. Thanks, Dennis, and thanks to staff who worked so hard on this. This is one of our council goals, and I'm happy to see we've finally gotten to this point. I do understand that there are a few developers, investors, who are worried this could hurt their property value, and to those people, I have to say that I just respectfully disagree. I think for Urbana's economic development, we have to have strong neighborhoods, we have to have attractive neighborhoods, and that this sort of measure keeps this neighborhood as one that people want to come to Urbana to live in. It's a neighborhood that's near downtown, and it's really unique in its affordability and the nice homes, the historic character. A similar measure, downzoning saved the West Urbana neighborhood in, I think it was the 1980s, 1991, it got finished, after the downtown-to-campus plan. And now that neighborhood has been preserved as a destination, as an attractive neighborhood. And so I think this neighborhood, the Historic East Urbana neighborhood, deserves the same thing. Lastly, I want to just point out how many residents were in support of this. It really strikes me that we got something like 80% said they support it, and actually said this didn't go far enough. So I think in terms of the next steps, after we hopefully approve this here tonight, I encourage staff to continue looking into the issue of design review, so that even when something does get demolished, what gets built is compatible. I think that's part of our goal and goes part and parcel with this, and look forward to seeing that happen as well. And also that we consider some of these other rezonings in the areas that weren't included in this study area, that we take a look, if property owners want to, at surrounding properties to match and to get compatible, compatible land uses. So thank you very much, and I strongly support this.
Charlie Smythe.
Brandon, sorry to mention much what I was going to mention in terms of West Urbana. You know, the rezonings that were done in 1991 affected both West Urbana and this area to the south of Lincoln Square. And in all, in those cases, it's really been wildly successful. Yes, we've had to go back and do some fine tuning and some additions, and I would encourage people to continue to work on doing just that. But it's really a shame that this wasn't all done in 1991, in much this fashion, all the way around, you know, the three, three-quarters of the circle instead of just two parts of it. So I do expect it to be successful, but I do also expect, you know, and encourage some fine tuning to go on in the years to come. Thank you.
I think we should point out also that the downzoning of the West Urbana Neighborhood Association, or neighborhood, rather, led to it becoming one of the top 10 neighborhoods in the United States. Okay, any other comments on this? This is the omnibus motion, including items four through eight. Is that correct? As printed on the agenda. Would the clerk please call the roll? Ms. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Bowersaw?
Yes.
Mr. Garrick?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Very yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Okay, that motion carries.
And unlike the rezonings in 1991, this one was unanimous. She says a lot.
Very kind.
Okay. Ordinance number 2008-09-115, an ordinance amending the comprehensive plan map of the city of Urbana to allow for 502, 504, and 508 East Elm Street to go from central business to residential.
We actually like to cover the two items together.
Okay. The next one is the zoning map, revising the zoning map. So these two implement?
They're related, yes.
Yeah, okay, Lisa Karcher.
Sure. I'm actually not going to do a presentation for this, though. No, I'm not. Psych, I'm sorry. The reason that this is before you, I think Dennis kind of alluded to, that this proposal came essentially out of the rezoning that you saw in the last case. We did interpret the fact that the comprehensive plan map did have a boundary, and that these properties, the difference between them is, one, is that they were outside the map and the comprehensive plan. The second thing was that the comprehensive plan showed these properties at 502, 504, and 508 East Elm as being central business in the comprehensive plan as compared to residential, what we saw in the last case. So essentially, we talked to the property owners and said that they, as any other property owner in Urbana, that they can petition for a rezoning. And then on our recommendation, since the rezoning essentially is different than what's proposed, or what the designation for the comprehensive plan is, we then recommended they also submit a change for the comprehensive plan. So that's why you have two before you. Comprehensive plan change from central business to residential, and then the rezoning from R5, which is a medium-high-density residential, to the R3, which is similar to what was proposed in the last case. Essentially, these are three single-family residences. The reason there's a break in the addressing, obviously, you can see from the map in your packet that there's two properties in between the three properties. Those are currently multifamily structures, so they were not involved in the rezoning. One's a house that's been converted into three residential units. The other one is actually, a house has been torn down, and a five-unit apartment complex has been put in its place. So the property owners, they would like to also protect the residential character of their homes and of the neighborhood, and continue with that rezoning. When this was discussed at the Plan Commission, essentially, there was some discussion as to a concern for amending the comprehensive plan, since the comprehensive plan was recently adopted. But there was an understanding on the desire by the property owners to rezone their property to essentially preserve the residential character. So ultimately, the Plan Commission, in two separate recommendations, in a vote of four to two, recommended denial of the comprehensive plan amendment, but then did recommend, in a vote of four to two, to recommend approval of the rezoning. And I think that their goal in that, if I can kind of paraphrase, is that they felt that by not changing the comprehensive plan, that they still said that we agree, we support the property owner's desire to have it rezoned, but that we feel that central business may still be appropriate for this area in the future. So that was their vote. In staff's recommendation was to approve both the comprehensive plan amendment as well as the rezoning. And that's basically all I have, unless somebody has questions.
Charlie Smythe.
Yeah, I sort of found the logic of the Plan Commission a little bit off here, because if you remember what we did on the Bucy Corridor, there, the comprehensive plan does basically split the block, and, you know, it does zigzag a little bit through there. And that was intentional, the idea being that the backyards of properties are better for transition and zonings than face-to-face. Now, just to the east on Grove Street, we just re-zoned three of four properties back to R3. We're looking at, you know, three properties here that are going to be zoned R3 if part of this passes, and the Plan Commission recommended it. But then we have across the street, to the south of Elm, which, in this particular block, which hasn't been dealt with yet, probably needs to be reviewed separately. So my own feeling is that I have no problem, you know, going down the middle of the block in terms of defining the comprehensive, you know, in terms of how to define the comprehensive plan. So I would support passage of both the comprehensive plan and the rezonings here, and, I'm not sure which one goes first.
Are you planning to make an omnibus motion?
Yeah, I will, yeah, I'll omnibus both nine and 10. That's ordinance number 2008-09-115, an ordinance amending the comprehensive plan for 502, 504, and 508. And ordinance number 2008-09-116, amending the zoning map, rezoning 502, 504, and 508 from R5 to R3.
And I second that.
Okay, motion by Mr. Smythe, seconded by Mr. Roberts. Any discussion? Mr. Roberts?
Yeah, I just want to say how much I support this plan to assist these neighbors. It's very unusual for individual residential property owners to come forward and ask that their property be protected in this kind of way and downzoned. The Planning Commission even commented that most likely, almost every case that they've ever had, that people were trying to get more for their property by upzoning it and trying to make it into something more than it was. And in this case, we have people who are actually trying to preserve it. And if you've read the documents that were given to us, you'll know that part of the problem now, and it's kind of a shame that there wasn't greater care, and Chairman Pollack of the Planning Commission said that his opinion was that the comprehensive plan is, provides us a guide, and should not, is not set in stone, and that, in his opinion, the map could have been flexed a little bit to include the properties on both sides of Elm Street on that block because of the interest of the neighborhood to preserve its character, including these three properties on the north. Well, unfortunately, these pieces of property were removed from the plan through strict interpretation. And I just want to point out that on the corner of Maple Street and Elm, on the southeast corner, there's a single residence. This gentleman purchased the house in poor condition, entirely rewired it, entirely drywalled it, made it into a beautiful, single-family home again, and was very upset when he found out that the houses immediately to his east, the two small houses in the middle of the block, now have a building permit taken out on them by a developer who's probably going to be tearing them down and putting two ten-plex apartments on that property. And because there's a building permit now on these properties, there's not much we can do to save them, because they're there by right. So this very block, which the East Urbana Neighborhood Association was created to protect, is basically down in flames as we speak today. And it so discouraged the corner owner of that house that he came out against downzoning, even though he had spent all this money on preserving his house. He said that now he feared that nobody would want to live in his beautiful house because two ten-plex apartments are going to be his neighbors. This is exactly the situation that we are trying to stem through historic preservation actions in this town, and downzoning, and other protective measures that we try to establish to assist our neighborhoods to stay healthy and strong and vibrant. We're not really against having larger buildings in the transitional area of our neighborhood, and we recognize it as a transitional neighborhood area. But if we could have, if we could have limited what we, what is our Bucy Corridor, or our Bucy Finger, to the west side of Maple Street, we would have been so much more pleased. Well, that being said, this entire block, bounded by Maple Street, Grove, Elm, and Green, may be one that could be reconsidered in the future. And certainly, what we'd like to see, and which was promised to us by the community development director, was a discussion about appropriate design guidelines for new construction in our area. So I just want to say, and also, I just want to say this, that if you look at the indicated properties that we're discussing tonight, immediately to the north is a commercial area, that's Long's Garage. And on the west end of the property, alongside Long's Garage, there's a tree, and you'll see it as indicated. There's a red car parked right under the word "subject properties," and below it is a gray car, and that's parked right next to a tree that is a landmark tree in our neighborhood. It's a, if I could rethink of this, there's a plaque on its base, "It is one of the original old Grove trees." It's a huge giant oak tree, and Long's Garage agreed not to cut it down when they built their garage. They preserved the tree. Well, Sarah Matheny is one of the property owners, and she also has a huge oak tree on her property. And we would like to see, I would like to say also that in the development of some of these apartments, we've lost three or four original old Grove oak trees, because they were not protected, and they were removed so that a larger footprint of an apartment building could be created there. So we're actually deforesting our blocks in the East Urbana neighborhood so that apartments can be created and provided. So there's many issues that are associated with this request, and I want to say very much that I support it, because it carries the spirit of the intent of the Urbana, the Historic East Urbana Neighborhood Association, and our comprehensive plan that we submitted to the city of Urbana.
Anyone else? Would the clerk please call the roll? Ms. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Bowersaw?
Yes.
Mr. Garrick?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Okay, that motion carries. Next, an ordinance 2008-09-118, amending section 26.61 of the Urbana Code of Ordinances, and this deals with limousines.
Thank you, Mayor. This one's very, very small, just correcting an oversight.
Summon.
Anybody have any questions?
Okay. We have a motion by Stevenson, seconded by Smythe. Any other discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll? Ms. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Bowersaw?
Yes.
Mr. Garrick?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
That motion carries. Next, mayoral appointments. I'd like to appoint David Garrick to the Champagne-Urbana Cable and Telecommunications Commission and to the Urbana Public Television Commission. Commission.
I would move that they be approved, these appointments be approved.
Motion by Roberts, seconded by Smythe. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you very much. That motion carries. Okay, selection of mayor pro tem. Danielle Chinowith was the mayor pro tem, and she is not here, so we need to have a new person. Are there any nominations? Lynn Barnes?
I'd like to nominate Dennis for mayor pro tem, given he is our most longstanding member of our group.
Okay, motion by Barnes, seconded by Lewis. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries. Thank you very much.
An announcement here from the clerk. Phyllis reminded me that, or asked me to let people know that if you're interested in running for city office, there are 11 city positions and two elected positions with the township. Do you handle those as well? Okay, so those 13, so those 11 positions have packets associated with them that she is prepared to hand out to anybody of interest by stopping at the clerk's office.
Robert Myers?
Real quickly, you asked me a question earlier on that I couldn't answer right away. That question was, what is our current population going to be recognized as? I think for the purposes of state tax apportionment, I believe it'll be about 40,388, somewhere right around there.
Wow, we're a 40,000-plus community now. Thank you very much. There being no further business, this meeting is...